It's over to Career Day, it was the first year they had it over at Boree. And then, the reason I wanted to send them, it was pretty interesting, most senior days you just go see the colleges, you know, when they got their tables set up. Well, they set up a little deal where they had different people from rural towns that they got to go listen to them speak. So, uh, you know, a nurse and a ag, you know, different roles that they would be interested in. They got to go listen to those people speak. And so I thought that was a good thing to send them to. They seemed to really think that it was put together well, uh, but feel like it's something that would be beneficial for our seniors going forward. So I thought that was a good thing. Uh, tomorrow morning, I'm taking myself and Rod Brins, we're taking the eighth graders and ninth graders over to Green End Day. Leadership activities tomorrow, we're in Looters. Uh, Rod feels like he's got a good group of eighth and ninth graders that can compete for him. And so we're taking all the kids together tomorrow to go over there and take part in some leadership activities. And then the only other thing we have committed to is the Fall Festival again. Uh, sixth through 12th grade, uh, will be having booths at the Fall Festival. We're in the early, early, uh, decision-making process on that, hopefully we can get some ideas together this week. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting on that towards the end of the week, but we're hoping to have it open in the little gym and parking lot there if the weather's nice. And get those classes involved in that, so. That's really all we've got going on, a lot of activities, a lot of extracurricular stuff, but school is up and running, that's for sure. Any questions?
Okay, just to add some things that say in the enrollment page there, uh, state of two fifty-four. No change in elementary, one forty-six, or junior high forty-six, or high school sixty-five. Attendants, we've got a first attendance, uh, report, high schools at ninety-eight thirty-six. Elementary is ninety-eight thirty-five. And the districts at ninety-eight thirty-five. Activity calendar, things of interest coming up, uh, football had a change in schedule this week. Having heard junior high and JV, junior high and varsity will be at Pine Creek on Thursday, starting at six o'clock for junior high. The, uh, game Friday was moved because of lack of officials. Uh, the girls' basketball district will kick off at Monday at ten o'clock on Saturday. Looking in October, lots of activities going on. We have a little break there on the twelfth, it's our scheduled noon release. No games scheduled that day. We will be talking about a possible change, we'll be a little bit later as the agenda items, we'll have a motion on that. Basically, I'll tell you now that Cameron Delly has called and set up his audit for the two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, for October the fifteenth through the seventeenth, and he cannot, uh, be here. We thought about doing it, but he wanted us to sit with have a woman on the twenty-second. I cannot be here, I'm gonna U I L S late to a meeting that day. And he would, he would like for us to move into the twenty-nine, if possible, so he can give that report. He don't have anything going on that week, and being an item of choice to take action on work with later. That is the reason for that. At this time, we'll leave into the same agenda. See your manager, please, me, there. Eight four, Keith, I did look up fourteen fifty-nine to look at what it was, basically it was just a lot of tickets and a bunch of little, uh, just all summer working. Just a bunch of, bunch of things, a bunch of names.
I'd like to make some pay-runder.
All those in fiber? I don't know if you got those in the low. Well, uh, we'll make a note for, as you know, January, um, September and October are one of our highest bill months. And I sent you an explanation of the unique bills that I thought would be easy for you to see and understand what they are. Fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of bills are program or policy manuals that come about as soon as school starts out. That's a lot of money, and a lot of programs, insurance, and, uh, the different programs we have Renaissance Learning, Study Island. Then we have student insurance, we have, uh, insurance on all of our properties, that's twenty-eight thousand dollars. Worker's comp insurance is seven thousand dollars. Uh, your flu payroll extension, uh, was sixty-nine hundred dollars. That couple of bonds we had to pay for, the bond for the sign, downtown's a hundred dollars, and the bond for tax accessories are five hundred dollars. And, uh, a lot of chemicals from cafeteria was sixteen hundred. Cafeteria software, area school solutions, same act that runs our software is four hundred and sixty-eight. Just pretty much, uh, uniform insurance is thirty-one hundred dollars. U I L memberships, one thousand dollars, and of course we have my college textbooks for seventy-nine dollars, which we get that money back through rentals and through our textbook, uh, money that we have. Other than that, it's pretty much the same thing over here. These things should be as safe.
Does it sound, uh, like a route? Anybody seen anything, any requests about, how's my money at school?
Especially this month, but there'll be next months too. Hit Mole to grass where a poor school started, get involved. Usually try not to use them very much unless you get way, way behind.
That insurance fee right there, is that an annual premium? That's not permanent, that's it?
No, no, that's an annual premium. That's everything too?
Buses?
Buses, buildings, property, houses, everything. What, I'll tell you about that, last year we approved the rate for two years. That's why we had talked about it, we approved it for two years. But what they did do, come in, they re, I thought it was kind of, they came in with your rate approved and signed for two years. Then they came in and reevaluated up the buildings, and they went up. I've had the rate stay the same, but the values of the buildings went up. And it's just one of those bills that, uh, you know, we, we had some, you guys that have settled here for the last six years know we've had some claims. And you know how they're gonna get that money back somehow over the course of time. And, uh, so that's one of the reasons, that was twenty-four thousand last year, twenty-eight.
All right, at this time, uh, we're on, we're on the financial board, thanks to the actions.
And we are at that point, uh, in this report, for it to look right and smooth into a new year, I'm gonna have to have an audit process here to get our final numbers. So, we kinda gave a little estimate of what we feel like is gonna happen. We could be totally wrong, uh, but, uh, the numbers are pretty much there. Uh, if you look at the end of the year, we had one million, six hundred thousand dollars and some change here in CDs. At the end of August, had only a million dollars in the maintenance and operations account. Now, that fifty thousand dollars is just a guess of what we pay in this month that really has to be put on last month. Because some of those bills were for August, so you have to, you have to put on that last year. So that's just a guess. Uh, overpayment, when all the overpayments in my August check came in from the state, we were overpaid three million, uh, three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Which we did not put that on the budget, and it's just overpayment that they send us. And then, that, that does, uh, two million, one hundred, thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars in our operating account. Now, if you look over here at the, at chapter forty-one, that we did get our near final, chapter forty-one, and just as we expected. We did good because we got more kids in, and then that makes that go down. And, and our near final came in at one twenty-one. Now, I'm gonna have to wait on a check from them, and it's our money that they're, I mean, what they'll do, uh, they want three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars back. We want two hundred and five thousand that we paid them, so there'll be a difference in there that they'll probably hold out of our, uh, September payment. But that part all looks real good, and, you know, anytime your students and mothers come up, it's gonna help with chapter forty-one payments all in, all in the end.
They'll take our, our tax money, our refund, our tax, and put it against that overpaying.
Yeah, right, wow. Which ends up being good for us, more money in there in the very end. Now Cameron will verify all that. He's, you know, he's a guru and all that stuff, and we may get a little bit off, but that's pretty much the, the math's not that hard to do, really. So it looks, it looks like we're gonna end up with a good financial year, but again, that's, uh, that's for him to make that determination. But near finals are, are now. The tax collection, they're on a couple of things over, we have to collect D taxes. Dick collects a big check on the prior year that came in for eighteen thousand dollars, so, that must be the start. I think, uh, I think new board members and people should know this, uh, we're waiting here this, this time of year, in September and October. And, and that's one of the highest bills, that's the highest time we have bills coming in. But we don't get our money in from the state until the end of September, and, and right now, with this wave it is, probably won't get in. And then we get one in October, and then our tax collections start coming in eventually. So we have about three months there, and we're just operating on, on that nine hundred thousand thing. So you could see, uh, we're in good shape though, uh, but some schools have a really tough time right now to get some money to operate on. Because there's just no, there's no cash flow. The other thing is there, there's your budget that you approved last month, and it's all, all there, breakdown, you, you know, that's a good time to, as we go over the next year, to be, um, familiar with it, and know what the ins and outs of the budgets are, and where things go. Just a real quick overview, uh, we try, the law says we have to stay within functions. Line items are just there for us to help, uh, keep a good idea of what's, what's going on, but we have to stay within the functions that, uh, that are set to our course.
If not, we're going to have our number eight, and discuss some building project.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, we have Ronnie Moehl here, he, he served on our, uh, our facilities committee as chairman. They met, uh, a couple of times, he's here to discuss their findings and possibly take back the recommendations.
I thank you, based on what you said, you set up, selected chairman of our facilities committee. We met, uh, last month to organize and to listen to a presentation by a gentleman, consulting firm of, uh, Association of Schools, I believe, Mr. Gilmore. I don't recall his own name, but they had done a pretty thorough examination and inspection of the schools, of the entire campus, of all three camps, exactly. A good program presented lots of deficiencies they found. Uh, one of the things that was highlighted is, is the, the age of our buildings and the excellence in the condition of the maintenance and stuff that's been performed. And I think that's, uh, congratulations to the administration, staff, and maintenance staff, this, this take your buildings. They also presented recommendations to the committee on, on what possibly be some of the solutions to solve some of the problems with the facilities on campus. Uh, we all had a copy of those and took them home and stayed. We met again last week, uh, Jamie Lee took all of us on a pretty thorough tour of the cafeteria and the elementary buildings to take a look at some of the deficiencies there. And I thought it was, I liked it, it was just, she handed out, they talked about, the first thing on the list was the electrical problem with microwave over cafeteria. That building has some pretty severe structural problems. A little familiar with that, we just got through with some pretty severe structural problems down in Music City County. And that's an expensive proposition to fix, so. But the cafeteria and the first three wings on the, on the elementary were constructed nineteen fifty-seven. With all the, the great number of students that passed through that over the years, and we're all over shifting condition in our soil here. That entire facility has some real severe structural problems. And that goes in with electrical plumbing that caused with those, with that shift. We looked over, took about an hour tour, looked at the whole thing over, and we came back and, and the facilities made, made, and we had a pretty in-depth discussion about the report that we presented to us and the recommendations that the consultant firm made. And we felt as a committee that those recommendations were a little over-aggressive for what we felt the community would, would go along with and really what our facilities need. The recommendation, it was consensus that, that we present the board, recommend that the board, uh, take a serious look at the possibility of constructing a new elementary school back here on the backside of playground area. Once that's completed, ready for use, and then demolish the old elementary building, cafeteria facility, uh, like possibly park in there out of that to increase the entire, uh, safety in the campus. The one thing that the committee wanted, want to emphasize to the board, if we look at the construction of a new elementary school, I'd like to see an emphasis placed on security. The way this is laid out, maybe nineteen fifty-seven when it was constructed, it was a fine concept. Today, in the day's environment, and this really goes to what I deal with on, on my job every day down here, security of our children and the community large. And that doesn't just pretend, pertain to, uh, delivery and pickup of our children coming in and out in mornings and evenings. It's also the security of the students while they're here. This facility, the way it's built now, as you all learn, it's volatile. Uh, people can come and go, in and out of campus, the administration will never know the here, the way these, these are constructed. People could walk in, be in a classroom, the only one in there could front, maybe intrude, would be a lone teacher and her room full of students. That's something we need to really seriously look at, and that was our recommendation, that we look at a new elementary school with security and, and another emphasis was on conservation. We're all aware of our, of our, of our problems today and other issues that may be with us for some time, so we wanna take a look at that. Our recommendation basically is that we want the board to take a look at the possibility of constructing a new elementary school back here. Demolish this, make it a parking lot area to, to enhance security all the way around on this campus. One of the other recommendations, and, and this was a lower priority that was brought up, up in the high school, was to take a look at what we do with our stormwater. That seems to be a problem, when we get heavy rain, we have that problem, that's unfortunately left, but we do have it. And when we do, there's a problem with dispensing that stormwater, and a lot of times it ends up in the school. So we'd like for you to recommend that, that, uh, we take a look at those areas. But primarily, we feel that this community could get behind a new elementary if we present it correctly and we go that right. Uh, the main emphasis is just to increase, uh, in our learning capacity here, education is, is the main push in the security of our students and teachers' life in the facility. Do you have any questions, gentlemen?
You'll feel like, uh, cafeteria also would be?
Yes, cafeteria, and in the elementary, the, the look at, at, I think, kind of issue cafeteria facilities and all in there. Uh, really the cafeteria over here is really the real problem, along with, of course, the, the first three wings on that elementary. Label the ones built first, that whole facility is just about seeing its service, service life come together. And we're really gonna have to think about upgrading, and so, and we feel like with the condition it's in, a remodel would, would not suffice. And that still would do anything for the security problem of our students and staff. Any other questions?
We appreciate it.
I appreciate it, I'll keep him tall. Thank you.
Seems to be a lot of foot, but we see also?
Yeah, I'm made it, I, I came and kinda got the meeting started, and I left. I wanted that group to work within themselves and not have any pressure from the administration anyway. And they handled that, and we've all been pretty much, uh, for that, and it seemed to be a lot of talk, and that's why I put that next item on there, is if, if this is what the board wants to do, I, I need to, uh, to get these architects in line and get them here one night, so you can handle it. Um, it's, it's amazing, you know, they, they just have a sixth sense. I had three of them call today, uh, and I try to tell them that we don't have any experience with anybody, we don't know anybody that we're, we have to, and then, maybe narrow it down to one or two, because if there's too many of them, and some of them don't have anything around here. Some of them actually do not have anything for us to go look at, they're all further, further east, so.
What do you think, uh, Whitebrooke, I have a recommendation?
He's got a guy that he works with, uh, he's saying, I've made, he's, he's a real nice guy, uh, but he's, he has no, he has done nothing around here for us to look at. And, and that's why, you know, I, I just told him, I said, I, I'm not gonna promise anything, I think that's the board's decision. They'll come, they'll show you the stuff that they've done. But, I mean, we might not see it firsthand, if you're gonna see their, their projects, that's what they'll do. Maybe there're gonna be about four of them, this work, CADCO, uh, of course they've done a lot of schools around here. Grounds and Associates is from Loveberry, has done a lot of schools around here also. There's, uh, uh, this guy, uh, he's got his associate in his group, it's called the, the one that's Steve Reisinger.
The W A?
Is it? Yeah, right. And then there's one more, so there's, there's gonna be four that are, that are interested in coming to visit. What I'm gonna just have to do is just do my best, looking at our calendar, looking at our, at your games and all the things going on, and just see when I can get them all here. And then just, just call you and say, hey, this one we're gonna do. And then, because we have to have that architect in hand before we can start the next phase, and that's, uh, selling, selling the, something to the community. I have to have some, we have to have renderings done, and, uh, have to have some, uh, get some dollar amounts, narrow down a little closer to what we're talking about. And that's council square footage, and those kinds of things. I think, I, I really appreciate him doing that, I think it was the right step. Like I, I told Tanny the other day, I said, I don't have a paved road, knowing what to do here, I'm just doing what I think's just the right way and not trying to, uh, push this on anybody, except, uh, I think right now that was a good thing for, for my first step for us.
Do those guys do anything like a preliminary, you know, like maybe for the interview process? Do they have like a preliminary, just, this is what we might be able to do?
Uh, I mean, they never, they do, you know, uh, well, they all been by my office multiple times. Not really, just trying to see what to do. And hopefully I would make a recommendation to the board, but I, I don't, I, I couldn't make one, because I don't have any experience from any of them. I think that's where, we're all gonna have to use our resources, and, and we know people across the state, and people that have done things, will have to pool that information and come up with the best, and, and best decision, but I, I think they're gonna, I think they're gonna come in here and, you know, present that. They're, they're gonna save what they can do, and they can do, you know, they're all gonna, it's, they're selling, they, uh, that's just the way it's gonna work. We're just gonna have to, we'll deal with it, and then, and then once we get that in, then we'll have to, and then once we start this other part, then we'll have to do construction.
Will they be aware, before we meet with them, will they be aware of the projects we're looking at?
I think I, I think I'm supposed to send them out a brief, uh, description of what we're planning on doing, and a rough square footage, uh, thing from this to this. You sure don't wanna go in there and, and say, well, we wanna, we're gonna, we're gonna do this amount of money, because, that's, you're just the opposite. You don't wanna say that, but you just kinda tell them what we're looking at, and then they'll go up there and they'll have some ideas of what, what, I'm sure they'll be presenting something for us. I'm not sure if they're gonna.
I don't think they have an idea of the number, right?
And I'll be giving it that, I'll be giving that to them. And, and again, that's just going through, uh, just a starting point, okay? That's just a starting point, that this board will be involved in designs and, and, and finalizing all designs and everything involved in that. We just have to have a starting point, rough idea of what, what we're gonna do. Anyway, I'll just start putting it together and, and just make it real quick. I did get, I did get the, uh, the exact date for the bond, uh, a bond has to be, the last date for ordering election is February the twenty-seventh. That's the date we'll have to, so we've got plenty of time to, to start putting this all together.
Now, do you need kind of action?
No, don't need to act, not yet. We'll need action the next month.
Anybody else have any comments? Not, we're going to have another, and we're considering, uh, our next meeting, October twenty-nine. He's playing video, that's one camera, complete view, which is all we have.
Let me already read it.
He's in, oh, bye.
Yeah, just read it, now that may not be the architect. Yeah, just recommend, now that may not, his architect, we'll move to that somewhere else.
We need that nomination? It's probably not, I don't think they asked in their meeting to talk between us.
If we say, if we have a volleyball game, it's by district court, we're forced to rent it.
I would.
No, we'll all be there for it, girl.
I'll say that.
Oh, in favor. Okay, we have requests for personal data before the holiday.
This happens several times, and I know the same address is why, it's in our policy, but we have Teddy Myers requested December the 21st as a personal note, which is scheduled before holiday. And we have that action on that. I have approved those before on my own, but usually when they're emergency, when we don't have a board meeting in between that. So, this one, I had plenty of time, and we've always approved them, we never questioned them. So, I don't, y'all do as you want to do.
I'm anxious.
I can go in there and have that changed, they'll just let me deal with that, but right now, it's really, there's more to it. Keeps them from taking all the butts up.
That's right.
Yeah, now, medical doesn't fall into that.
Discuss the PBMAS report.
So, we can see another report, this is at the back here, Bill. This is the, this is a big report for us. This is the one that deals in bilingual, career in technology, and no child left behind, and special education. This report, we did, we had a great score on this. You'll indicate, your indicating performance level that you'll want to look at is all the way on the right, all the one that runs down. What you want to see is no data or zero. No data, which means we're too small, our groups were too small for them to look at, our groups meant a certain size, and we received a zero on it, that means we had no efficiencies. Most of the time, this has been, we've talked about four, the percentage of special education students in general, percentage of bilingual students, percentage of the special education students that are in self-contained classrooms or resource rooms near today, and sure, percentage is, lots of reports on this. Again, a little bit, sometimes too much going into detail over, but we met, we had a perfect score on this also, of the 10 districts in our county co-op. Most of the districts did really good on this. Most of them were district good, so we were in a good group of people, people give this under control over the last seven years, so all of them are zeros. It was a good report.
There's no further questions on that. We'll move to item number 12, discuss the possibility of an academic trip for the junior senior.
Let me just explain this to you, how this went. When I mentioned that at our board meeting last month, about five years ago, I, we had a group of teaching meeting, we talked about what we could do to put us different than some of the school districts around us and do something special for the kids. And I was really interested in us possibly doing a academic trip for our juniors. I thought, well, you know, it would be a senior trip, it would be during school year, have some control over, and it would be based on academics. And one of the things that came into my mind was going to Washington D.C. I said, "You know, all these kids will never get a chance to go anywhere, and it would be a great thing if we could offer that for our kids." Well, it kind of sat there, I didn't get a lot of response from it, and I just left it there. And then, we just met her, went to a ballgame down at Garden City, Sheffman been talking to Steve Long, Steve Long's guy around here, you guys know, and he's, and they start, he goes, "Real Bryce is working, so we can know Bryce will get to go to Washington D.C.?" Because they've been doing that for the last six years, they send their juniors to Washington D.C. for a four-day trip. And I thought that just re, I had a feeling for how good that would be for our kids, and how different would it be if we're trying to go forward, is if we could look at something like that. I haven't done any planning, I haven't, I've looked at the website, this place is a junior tour, as they call it, they do everything. From the day they get there, the minute they get there, to the end, it's very well organized, not a lot, it's not free time like a senior trip is. I put seniors down there, because I think the first year, there could be a possibility that we would really want to make that happen for all the kids, yes, and then after that, it would just flow into junior, junior type deal. When it's juniors, you have control of them as far as, you know, "We got you next year, if you go do something wrong, then we, there's consequences to relate to it." But, I want to get your feeling, individually or as a board, before I look forward to it and then brought you something, a plan for you. I didn't want to go do all that and bring something not like, not something, think it's something that we might.
I think our kids should have that opportunity everywhere, they get a little kid off juniors like that, but we don't.
Jake, we passed it there near, I don't know what, what grade, what standard?
Sweetwater, no.
Sweetwater, I think, correct.
Do they raise their own funds for?
Well, I think it would be a combination. I think there would be some things that we do as a district, and we'd have to be real careful, because you can't go in there and promise something, and then all of a sudden things turn bad here, and you can't do this. You've got to be real careful, saying, "Okay, we can do this much," and the kids, kids can go out and help raise some, I think he's talking about Fall Festival, and I thought about that right there, is there could be a purpose behind some of this job and be some excitement towards that. I think senior trips, over the years, there've been bad experiences with, I'm not proposing that at all, but I am proposing something that be more on the academic side and allow some of our kids to get to experience some things that they just, they just don't.
They wouldn't have to read a criteria to take all juniors?
Well, I think there's going, I think that's what that plan is. I think if somebody's had done some things bad and been in trouble and things like that, might help, help with a discipline, might help with some things like that, but I think there's a lot of planning and thought. I'd like to get a little committee up of teachers and their parents, and maybe put something together for you to look at and see if you want to go forward with it.
Keep an eye on the, the president.
Yeah, everything costs, everything, and then there's.
I have a period of, yeah.
We had some really, great kids here, there's no reason to, to do something.
But, I want to break that with you before I started looking at it, and I really would make before we bring something to, for you to, for you to look at. I think you can get some caution for that, but.
I bet you do.
Yeah. I'll try to do it there right now. I go to Washington some years. Anybody have a problem with being told to do something for some kids? Yes, I would give a change of motion. Do you enjoy?
I like that one.
I'll be the fan.